Hey, good evening, everybody, and welcome. I am Amanda Kurtz, Deputy Town Clerk, and I have a few statements for the record before we get started. Tonight's regularly scheduled Herndon Town Council Work Session is a virtual meeting. Next week's meeting is a public hearing, and individuals are encouraged to participate and to provide comments for the record at town.clerk@herndon-v-a.gov. The work session this evening is conducted electronically pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.237-08.2 as amended, the Order of the Governor, EO-53 as amended, and in accordance with Ordinance 20-0-23, Continuity of Governmental Operations During Pandemic Disaster COVID-19, adopted by the Herndon Town Council as amended. Proper notice of the electronic meeting was provided in accordance with Section 2.237-08.2 of the Code of Virginia, along with information for viewing the meeting and submitting comments for the record. The agenda and meeting materials are available on the town's website. Electronic meetings will begin with a roll call to determine a quorum. All votes, including adjournment, will be by roll call vote. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Amanda. I will call our June 2 Town Council Work Session to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Town Manager Bill Ashton.
Town Manager Bill Ashton is present.
Town Attorney Lisa Yates.
Town Attorney Lisa Yates, present.
Vice Mayor Olam.
Vice Mayor Olam, present.
Councilmember Baker.
Jennifer Baker, present.
Councilmember Delagula.
Councilmember Delagula, present.
Councilmember DeCall.
Councilmember DeCall, present.
Councilmember Friedrichs.
Councilmember Friedrichs, present.
Councilmember McKenna will be absent this evening. Mayor Merkel.
Lisa Merkel is here. So, for the record, we do have a quorum electronically. Councilwoman McKenna wanted me to let you all know he had a work commitment that he was not expecting this evening, so that's why he's unable to join us. As stated by the clerk, tonight's meeting is conducted by electronic means pursuant to the appropriate laws. As usual, I'll ask everyone to physically raise their hand so I can recognize you for comments, and try to remember to state your name before your comment so that our record is easy to follow. With that, I will move to the Town Manager, Mr. Bill Ashton, who has an update on the continuity of operations and matters related to the emergency and maybe some other things. So, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the record, I'm Bill Ashton, the Town Manager. I just wanted to give you all a brief update on COVID-related activities that have occurred since last we spoke. The biggest one was that we moved into Phase 1 as Northern Virginia moved into Phase 1 of reopening. Phase 1 of reopening has some very limited opportunities for businesses to begin to get back on track. One of them was the opportunity for outdoor seating. The town had worked very diligently on creating opportunities for our restaurants to avail themselves of this opportunity, and we revamped the process, the approval process, and we to include both restaurants on private land as well as that on public land. And we were able to reach out to all of our restaurants to see who wanted to be part of this. We received 28 applications between Thursday noon and Friday in the afternoon. We were able to approve 27 of them within 24 hours. And for the public areas, we were able to get barricades put in place to protect diners from vehicles in those locations as well. It was a phenomenal team effort by DPW, CD, primarily the zoning administrator, led by Dennis Holstein, and Jenny Tripoli and a few others that truly did some yeoman's work late last week to get some vibrancy back into our town. On the notes of the town-related elements, parks, Brady Park, the parking lot tennis courts are now open. We are going to keep the playgrounds, fields, restrooms, and basketball courts closed for now, as we examine when the appropriate time in the phasing sequence of reopening we can open them. We've also opened up the parking lot, the Running Me Park. The trails had always been open. Now the lot is open. Spring Street Park also opened this week. Stanton Park also opened this week. Trailside Park, the parking lots were opened by the weekend. We removed the barricades on the skate park Monday morning, so the skate park is now open. Tennis courts at Bruin and Shandon are also opened. As I said earlier, playgrounds, town playgrounds around town are closed for now while we work through some of the guidance that we are receiving from CDC and BDH regarding transmission risk and cleaning protocols and the like. While we work through that, we'll keep those closed. We are working right now on ball fields, the sand volleyball courts, and we should be in a position to make an announcement later this week. HMC, we continue to make modifications in HMC so as to conduct business while observing all social distancing guidelines. We are still probably two weeks out from that, but we're working diligently on that. That will include things like sneeze guards at our customer service counters, consolidating customer service counters, putting stanchions up to guide traffic, one entry door, one exit door, markers on the floor. It would include if you have business beyond the counters that you'd have to make an appointment and where we're going to hold those appointments in order to keep staff space decompressed. And those things are being worked on as we speak. The most popular thing that happened last week is the golf course reopened on Wednesday. The clubhouse remains closed, but A Carney was able to serve patrons with a limited menu outside. We were sold out over the weekend. It is just rocking. Fortunately, the weather is cooperating very well with us. We've done some suspension of some of the rates that we have to entice people to come in at certain times because of the demand, and we've also suspended some elements of the annual pass because of our limited number of carts that are available since we're putting one person per cart. With that, that's where we are with COVID-related issues. Now, over the weekend, the governor issued a second state of emergency for the Commonwealth, and this stemmed from the horrific tragic event in Minneapolis and the ensuing protests that stemmed from them. So, the governor issued the state of emergency for that, those issues on Sunday. And I've asked Maggie DeBoer, Chief Maggie DeBoer, to step in and give you a quick couple of words from her perspective on those things, and with your indulgence, Madam Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to Chief DeBoer.
Absolutely. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Counsel. Can you hear me okay? Okay.
Yes.
It's been a difficult week, week and a half, two weeks. I'll tell you that there's a lot of people struggling in this profession, and it's not just limited here to Herndon. It's limited to all over the state, all over the country. We're in a really difficult spot, and I can tell you honestly, in three or four years, I've never seen one this difficult. And it's largely something that we know is not going to go away anytime soon, and it's just so painful. It's so truly painful to see the change in attitude toward officers and toward the profession because of an incident by a few, a very few people. It has undone so much of what we have done as a profession, and there is no quick fix to this, and we know that, and we're trying to stay focused. But in reality, I will tell you, I have people on edge. There was nine officers shot across the country last night. Several were run over. Two officers in Richmond were shot. There was one shot in the back of the head, ambushed in Las Vegas. So, those realities are real for us. But I have been urging our officers to remain very vigilant, but also understand that we are blessed with the community that we have here in Herndon. They have been tremendous with the support. That does not negate the danger for them because it's the opportunists that we worry about. It's not the community. We know. I can tell you, we know our community is behind us, and we know that each of you are behind us. That's incredibly important and comfortable to the HPD staff here. I can't undersell that enough, but we still need to be very careful, and part of that is just trying to deal with where this profession is going. And I'll tell you, I think one of the more difficult things that I'm dealing with also is my role in the Virginia Chiefs Board. I sit in second in line on that board, and we are dealing with the governor's office on a daily basis, and the issues are not easy for us to deal with. They're not easy for the governor's side to deal with, but we got to find some common ground, and we have to make some progress forward. We know there are problems in the profession. We have been fighting, especially at the state level, we have been fighting to fix problems in this profession for years, and we've made some ground that in other places we have not. And this should be an opportunity for us to do that, hopefully, without a rash reaction about what people think is right to fix this profession, because I think all of us who truly are engaged and committed know what we need to fix it, and it starts with a people issue, and it's about bringing the right people in the door. And when you bring the people in the door and they're not doing the wrong thing, it's about getting rid of those people. So, we have some challenges because a recent poll that was done in February said that 87% of police departments in this nation were struggling desperately to hire good people. I can't imagine what that poll would look like if it was done today. So, we have some real challenges ahead of us, and we're going to have to find a way to get there and create trust, and you know, the whole issue about racism, we know racism exists, you know, with officers. I mean, I can't tell you I have racist officers here because I don't believe I do, but we also know that racism is throughout society in every profession. The difference for us is the outcomes when we get it wrong are tragic, and you can't fix that. There's no margin of error for us getting those things wrong, which is why it's so important that we bring the right people in the door and retain the right people throughout, you know, their careers. So, I just wanted you to know that we have been committed to that for a long time here. We have made every effort to keep the right people here, to bring the right people here, to get rid of the wrong people, and we're no less committed to that now than we were, you know, five years ago. But we're going to stay that course, and we're going to continue to fight to do the things that we need to do to make sure that our community continues to trust us. I will also say that I've had a lot of very supportive emails from the community in various places. That's very comforting to me, and I have passed that on to our troops. But they've also thrown a lot of questions at us about, you know, why don't you look at this, and why don't you do this, and why aren't you up to date on use of force policies? We are very current. We are very up to date on our policies and our procedures and our tactics. As a matter of fact, the only reason we hadn't posted our general orders previous to, yeah, I think this morning online, is because we change them so frequently. Ours don't sit for five or 10 years. They're constantly evolving. So, but we did post them this morning so that, you know, we could make it very easy for the community to answer really a lot of their own questions about what is your policy on this, what is your procedure on that? And we have been, long before I got here, a Kalia accredited agency, but think about this, less than 5% of agencies throughout the entire country are Kalia accredited. We are one of those, 5%. So, I know we're making all the efforts to do the right things, and your support to do that honestly cannot be understated, so I thank you for that. The long-winded answer, but I just wanted to make sure that you understood how much I appreciate the support that we've gotten here from the community and from each of you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for being here. Mr. Town Manager, I want to turn it back to you. You have further comments or other questions for?
I do not, Madam Mayor.
Does Council have any questions for the manager or for the chief? Yes, sir. Cesar.
Hi, Mr. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Delagula. Chief, I just want to tell you thank you for the support, and let us know what Council could do to help facilitate or ease some of that tension. Just as an FYI, I have a nephew. He's a great kid. He's 12, got some issues that he's dealing with after a divorce. He tends to be a little bit on the brown side, and I can tell you this, he feels safe here because every time we walk around, he waves to the police, "You guys wave back." So, I know it's tough out there. I know some people don't have that experience, but this is from a 12-year-old, and I had to talk with him about four weeks ago about if he ever gets stopped, and he doesn't have that issue here. He feels safe here. So, for whatever it's worth, I just wanted to share that.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Tell everyone that story. Is there anyone else who would like to ask a question or have a comment? So, everybody, I saw Jen first, and then I saw Signe, and then I'll go to the Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I love that story. That's fantastic to hear. And yeah, Chief, thank you. I thought what you wrote on the Herndon Police Department page was excellent. You did a great job of, you know, sharing, of course, that the tragedy of what happened and that although that those are fellow police officers that did that and how that erodes the trust, but and how important trust is to your force, and that's something we rely on you for and that you're so good at building with our community and with your officers. And I know it's hard to then talk about other officers who we all clearly can see they did something very wrong, and I know that can be a difficult position for police officers to be in, and I really appreciated the way you handled it and what you wrote about. Also appreciate that you're working with the community to have the protest and the march that we're going to have on Thursday evening, so thank you for that. Just again, one of the just best parts about working in Herndon is that we have this sense of community, that we do look out for each other, and we do have the support of our police, and we support our police in return. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Was it Signe that I said next? Okay, thank you.
So, right after Daryl Smith passed away, one of my neighbors across the street who's lived in this house ever since my neighborhood was built, said to me, he's never lived in a community before where the police and the community were so deeply entwined, there was so much mutual trust. And when I go, you know, knocking on people's doors to talk to them and ask them what their favorite thing about Herndon is, many people of color tell me it's our police. And I think that's a telling thing. You have shown our community that, you know, you care, and, you know, I am so proud whenever I look at some other communities and see what's going on, I just think, well, I know our police chief has our best, our citizens' best interests at heart. I also really was touched by what the Alexandria Police did yesterday, and I'm sure you saw that on YouTube, but it's very important to our communities of color, I think, to have police stand up and say how it affects them and how much they care about their community. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you, and I'm really sorry that we aren't going to have our National Police Night possibly this year because of the crowds, because I think that shows how involved, excuse me, our officers are with the city. And my youngest son had a couple of officers from the Herndon Police were his coaches, and so for years, every time I see them, and when I see those officers today, they will ask me how mad he is, and he's 28, you know, grown and moved away. But I agree, our officers are so incorporated in the community, and they know people, and they get out there, not just at National Night Out, but also at the schools. When the officer dyed his mustache pink, we know who we're talking about, the kids at the schools love that, and that just makes you the beloved officer. I'm sorry you're going through this, and you've definitely got my support and all of my point.
Thank you. Pradeep, did you have anything? I think you're the only one I haven't called on. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Chief. We are very lucky, and we are very blessed to have the police department, you know, which is so engaged with the community. And I think that respect goes both ways, community and the police force both ways. And I so agree with Councilmember Friedrichs that, you know, when I went knocking the doors, whenever I meet our residents and I ask them what is one of the most favorite thing in Herndon, and they always mention the police department, and that tells how much our community trusts and has faith in the police department. And then, police department has equally worked for the community to earn that respect. So, we trust you. We have faith on you. Let us know if there is anything we can do, like Councilmember Delagula said, to facilitate or to ease the tension. If there is anything we can do, we are ready to do it and keep doing the great work. So, again, thank you so much.
Thank you. Mayor, may I add one thing?
Certainly, please.
Two things, actually. Quickly, in response to Vice Mayor Olam's comment about National Night Out, that already has been moved to October, so there is an opportunity there that we may be able to still hold that event. I mean, I certainly hope that that's the case. We actually have been kind of advocating for that for years because that's truly when Crime Prevention Month is and was the typical time for that, but they had always held it in August, and there's more people that are not away in October, too, so we could actually have bigger events and less hot weather if we do it then. So, if we're not restricted from COVID-related issues, then we hope to have a nice, big event with the community in October, and we will certainly give you prior advance of that date very soon. Just the other point that I failed to mention very quickly was our biggest concern right now, despite the issues, is really safety and protection for not only our officers but also the community. The civil unrest is unacceptable on every level, and it's certainly not a path to peace on either side. So, we are working very hard to ensure that any event that we do support and that any issue that could spill over into town, that we protect our businesses, protect our residents and citizens here, because that is just not the kind of attention we want here for the town of Herndon.
Thank you. I just issued a statement right before the meeting started about this, and I concur with everything my colleagues have said. My mom always tells me that where I live isn't like where everybody else lives. I mean, this really is a great place, and we all know that. The relationship with the community that the police have, though, didn't just happen. I think there are a lot of people who live here who don't realize that Herndon was the site of race riots in 1974 following an officer-involved shooting of an African-American resident. It was a Fairfax County officer. It wasn't a Herndon police officer, but that doesn't really matter. Riots ensued for a couple of days. Smitty was a brand-new police officer, rookie, 24-years-old, and was there. You imagine that position he was in. But after that, the town started taking on efforts to reach out to the community. Smitty started that homework club, and it was in the basement of, I forget which building at that time. The Herndon Community Center spun out of that unrest and needing to be able to connect with the community. It's taken years. It doesn't just happen overnight. So, when I see these, anytime any sort of tragedy happens at any level, and I see mayors and police chiefs on the news, it's every mayor and police chief's worst nightmare to be those people on the news. And I just hope that the communities across the country, that from this awful situation that our country finds ourselves in, and hopefully there will be some good that comes from it like happened in Herndon. It takes leadership, commitment, compassion, care, trust, and time. So, thank you, Chief, and for all the people here before you that helped make that happen, and I pray that we never find ourselves behind a microphone together. Thank you for being here. Anybody else before I move on? Town Attorney's being really quiet over there. That's okay. Ms. Baker.
Yeah, Councilmember Baker. I know I already spoke, so thank you for letting me speak again. I wanted to touch on something that the police, that Chief DeBoer mentioned. So, certainly, you deserve the praise. Your officers deserve the praise. We are really thankful, and as Mayor Merkel just stated really well, we live in a place that is different, and I do feel like we're the exception and going to continue to be the exception. I do feel it's worth stating, though, that certainly racism exists. We're all aware of that. It exists in our citizens, and if not in our officers, certainly unconscious bias exists, right? And I do appreciate that the police force with the help of the Town Manager has been really diligent, vigilant about training and making sure that we are focused on that because we all have that bias, and it just can be, as you said, Chief DeBoer, it can be tragic when those things happen within, when a person has the ability to use force on another human being. So, thank you for taking that really seriously. Thank you for taking recruiting so seriously and looking at that so carefully and making sure that we are getting the very best recruits possible, and of course, continuing to train them and to train our existing officers that, with the way in which we want that very important role to protect and to serve that we empower them with. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, guys. And Chief, thank you again for being here this evening. We haven't gotten to see one of the webexes yet.
Yeah, I know. I've been hiding.
I know. Right, thank you so much. We do have a whole bunch of public hearings this evening, but the good news is we're going to have concurrent staff reports on almost all of them, so we'll move right into that. Several public hearings on the agenda tonight. The first eight relate to the use of eminent domain for Streetscapes Phase 3 and the Center Street Eldon Street intersection projects. The proposed ordinances for the Streetscapes Phase 3 project would authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of fee simple interests and temporary easements for public pedestrian utility and streetscape improvements along Eldon Street in downtown Herndon on five parcels of property. Do I need to read those into the record, Madam Town Attorney? The addresses?
You do not.
Okay.
You do with the public hearing.
Okay, perfect. All right, so you guys have your agendas with you, so you can see that. The proposed ordinances for the Eldon Street Intersection Project authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of fee simple interest, permanent easements, and a temporary easement for transportation facility improvements at the Center and Eldon Street intersection on four parcels of property, which are listed here. I will ask the clerk first if we have received any comments for the record on these items.
Madam Mayor, we did not receive any comments on these items.
Okay, thank you. Maybe we will before next week. I'm going to recognize John Irish, who's our Deputy Director of Public Works, for a collective presentation on all eight items, and he'll be followed by input from our Deputy Town Attorney, Laurie Sigler. And before we move into that, I did want to just clarify, and I have a question for John. Under our COG ordinance, where we are only working on items that are, you know, critical to the continuity of government, how do these, why are these items that we are looking at under those circumstances?
Well, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The main reason this falls into the category of the reason included under the current circumstances are, there are two distinct projects I'll describe. One of them in particular, the Streetscapes Phase 3, is funded with federal funds that are, under current guidelines, certain restrictions, and in this case, there is an advertisement date for the project that is a deadline of June 24, 2020. In order not to jeopardize the project's funding, primarily, we need to have the right-of-way easements taken care of through this eminent domain process. The Center Street and Eldon Street intersection is not under the same requirements, but because of the two projects being integral to each other, we do want to try to bid them at the same time so we can take advantage of scale of the two projects together. So, that is the primary reason, and as you know, transportation is still a very important and integral part of our town's infrastructure, so it is still a critical part of that.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that because I suspected we might get some questions from the public on that, so thank you so much.
Absolutely. So, tonight, like you mentioned, I'm going to give you a collective overview of the two separate projects. When Sigler gets on, she will explain the actual details of the individual properties, but what we have is Streetscapes Phase 3. This is the completion of the Streetscapes project, which started many years ago, and it's basically the improvement of the sidewalk areas with street amenities, the acorn lighting, and right now, Phase 3 starts just past Jimmy's on the south side of Eldon Street and just past Sully's on the north side, and they continue to the west and will basically meet up with the Center and Eldon Street Intersection Project as well. The one segment you won't see actually shown in here is a segment that's part of the downtown development, but that section will be developed in the same manner of the Streetscapes that you'll see here. Go ahead, slide, please. you'll see here. Go ahead, slide, please. So this is just a basic diagrammatic picture. You see that the Center and Eldon Street project will be to the left-hand side of this picture. And then there's, it'll be seamless with the Streetscapes project going to the east. Slide, please. So Streetscapes, as I mentioned, is on the south side for the section just past Jimmy's down. And the reason it stops where we see it, that's the intersection with the Center and Eldon Street project. And on the north side, that's the section I mentioned that goes from Sully's down across the old Ice House. And what's missing on the north side is that section will be completed as a part of the downtown development. Slide, please. So the scope of the improvements for Streetscapes is basically finishing up the final phase for that overall project. It's going to include pedestrian bicycle improvements, landscaping, historic lighting fixtures, and also it will include a small section of the remaining section of underground, undergrounding for the utilities. And when you see the next slide, you'll see that we're trying to minimize the amount of land acquisition we need. So in the scheme of the overall project, these are relatively small sections. And as we've described in the past on previous projects, where we've used the eminent domain process, there usually are not large impositions on the property owners. A lot of it is more easement-related than actual taking of right-of-way. Next slide, please. So there are basically, the Streetscapes, five parcels involved. Actually, four different property owners. And the green that you see is temporary construction easements. The red is right-of-way taking. And this is all for just the sidewalk, which allows us to then, after we improve it, to maintain it and becomes part of the public right-of-way access there. The little square footage, you can see the right-of-way is 979 square feet, temporary easements of 336 square feet. Next slide, please. And this gives you an overall timeframe. I mentioned it's been a long time to complete this. It started, believe it or not, back in 1998. And the first two phases were completed up through two years ago. And our current schedule is, we're in the process of this land acquisition. We've completed the construction plans that are now being reviewed by VDOT. And there is a minor piece of utility relocation that will occur here. It's just one small power pole. The current projection is to receive the authorization from VDOT to allow us to advertise. We will not be advertising by that June 24 date. But as long as we have secured the easements through the eminent domain process, we'll satisfy that requirement. We're actually looking to be going out for bid, excuse me, in either mid to late summer or early fall, depending on how long it takes for VDOT to complete their review. That would hopefully put us in a position to start construction in the same general timeframe. And we would expect construction to be completed in no more than about six months. So we would hopefully, pending any real bad weather, be able to complete this by the end of this calendar year or maybe into the first part of the next calendar year. Next slide, please. So Center and Eldon is just a continuation, realigning the intersection that is currently there. Next slide, please. And it also will be adding a traffic signal at that light. So we'll continue the same type of sidewalk improvements around that intersection. We're adding pedestrian signals for crosswalks. We do have some drainage improvement as well. And the realigning is hopefully going to make it a little bit simpler to go through that intersection and both the turning motions that you would expect with a new signal there. And again, we're trying to utilize as much of the existing right-of-way as possible. Next slide, please. So this involves four separate pieces of property. The two at Parcell 75 and 74 have one owner. And again, the green is the temporary construction easement. The red is the right-of-way take. And the reason that's as significant as it is for Parcell 75 is we're adding a right-turn lane from northbound Center onto eastbound Eldon. And the future, I guess you would call it, that is a part for a stormwater easement. When we put that turn lane in, we have to add some stormwater drain. Next slide, please. And again, this is just a general timeline of where we came from for this particular project. The work session that started this was back in 2015. We're basically trying to follow the same track of advertising again at the same timeframe as the Streetscapes Three, and then starting construction at the same time and completing in six months or so. The fact that these are two separate projects under the VDOT parameters, we still will have to bid them as two separate projects. But if we have them bidding at the same time, our hope is that we could find a suitable bidder that would be able to be awarded the contract with both of those projects individually but at the same time. So we could like, they have that. And that concludes my overview. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy.
Thank you, sir. What questions do we have? Or actually, Laurie, did you have comments first? Or do you want to take questions? How do you guys want to handle this?
Madam Mayor, it's really your pleasure.
My pleasure. So does anybody have questions for Mr. Irish? And then if, or if not, then we'll move on to Ms. Sigler. And of course, you can ask both of them after, after both presentations. So, okay, Laurie?
Good evening.
All right, we'll move on to you. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the town council. It's nice to be here tonight. I've come here before to talk about kind of the same issues in regards to some of the other construction projects, the capital projects that the town has going on. With this project, to give you a quick overview, you notice you have eight staff reports in your packet. There's a total of nine parcels involved in the project. And what happened is one parcel, the one that had the significant take of right-of-way on the Center and Eldon parcel, that, the appraiser appraised the two parcels together. So that's why we're treating it with one staff report. And then there was one offer letter on that. And there's only four property owners amongst all the nine parcels. So we're not dealing with a lot of different property owners in that regard. And if you recall, in order to move forward with the condemnation, the Virginia law requires that, number one, the project is for public use, that no more private property can be taken for the project than is necessary to achieve the necessary improvements. There has to be a written offer and a bona fide effort, a bona fide but ineffectual effort to purchase and come to an agreement with the property owners. These offer letters went out end of April. We have had communications with all but one of the property owners. But we feel at this point that, that negotiate, that the negotiations are at an impasse for the purpose of us being able to move forward with the project. There are a couple also mortgage or deed of trust holders on some of the properties, but not all of them. And of course, we need the mortgage lenders to also convey their interest or sign on to the deed in order to convey good title. So again, we can proceed with condemnation if we can agree on compensation or other terms of the settlement and if the owner is also unable to convey a valid title. In order to proceed with a condemnation, we do need to have a public hearing. And that's the purpose of the work session tonight and then, and then the public hearing next week. It's that we can only move forward with the action of the town council. And in order for that certificate to be filed, we also had to send another notification letter to the property owners. And that simply states that we can't move for, that we can't move forward with filing the certificate no sooner than 30 days from the date of that letter. And then we have 45 days total. We can't file the certificate after the 45th date. Those letters to the property owners went out May 15. So those are the parameters that we're looking at to move forward. And I think that's, just wanted to give you a brief summary again of the process, and I'll certainly, you know, take any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you so much. So what questions do we have for either Laurie or John? Sigley?
So you said we have four property owners, and we've been able, we've been in contact with three of them. We've actually had reciprocal conversations with three of them. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And is there any reason, so is the one that we're not in contact with, is that the large one or the other ones?
Actually, it is not the large one. It is, it's one of the smaller, the smaller acquisitions.
Okay, that's good news.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions? Pradeep, and I think I saw Sheila, right? Okay, go ahead, Pradeep.
Thank you, Laurie. My question is, I was about to ask, how long do we anticipate for this condemnation process to go based on our experience? But you said, so we sent the letter on May 15. Is that correct?
Yes, and this is Laurie Sigler again. The notice letters, the offer letters were sent out earlier, but the notice letter was sent out on the 15th. So the 45 days would be no later than June 29.
June 29. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheila?
This is Sheila Olem. Thank you. On the Church of Jesus Christ, 800 Eldon Street Parcel 0033, how are they going to be impacted if they should make changes? Because they're going to be a significant amount of their property compared to the others. And they're probably going to be non-conforming. So do they do any take?
Ms. Vice Mayor Olem, this is Laurie Sigler again. And I think, actually, from the church property, the large area you saw, which I believe was the color green, was temporary construction easement. Looking at my information, that was 100, I guess, 73 square feet. We only need seven square feet of right-of-way from them. And I know, when I looked at the PowerPoint presentation, if you, it's hard to see the red area on that slide because it is so small. But again, the right, the right-of-way we need is only the seven square feet. The rest of it is only for construction, and that easement, it terminates after the project is over.
Okay, thank you. It went by so fast. I was paying attention to the red and green. But thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Laurie or for John this evening? Anybody? Okay, thank you. So tonight was easy because, and I believe next week they will be all concurrent staff reports once again for the public hearing. But we get to do all of the separate public hearing votes, and they're all by roll call since we are, well, they may have been by roll call anyway, I believe. So that'll, that'll take the bulk of our meeting next week. So just be ready for that. So next up is an ordinance to consider amending the fiscal year 2020 adopted budget. And I'll ask Amanda, the town clerk, our deputy town clerk, if we've received any comments for the record on this item.
No, Madam Mayor, we have not received comments on this item.
Okay, thank you. And I believe that Jenny Tripoli is going to be here for, for the staff report. And there she is. And you're at home, so maybe we'll hear the puppies.
Yes. Well, one of them is sitting right here just waiting to cause trouble.
Perfect.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is Jenny Tripoli, the Director of Finance. I know we just talked about the '21 budget and adopted it, but I'm coming to you with a request to amend the FY '20 budget just for grants or other external revenue sources that were not contemplated during the original FY '20 budget because they happen off-cycle. This happens all the time. You get grant dollars, you know, throughout the year, or things like accidents happen. As you may recall, somebody took out the beautiful lighted sign that tells people they're in the town of Herndon right by Worldgate.
Again.
So they did recover 100% of that cost through insurance. And so it's for things like this. So next slide, please. I'll just run you through it very quickly. On the general fund side, the Police Department, it's about $105,441, all grant-funded either through seized assets, through the State Internet Crimes Against Children grant. Also, we have a couple of federal selective enforcement grants that we get through the DMV to target speeders and people driving under the influence. So this is to appropriate dollars for those costs. Department of Public Works, as can happen on occasion, we completed some punch list items for a developer, and they reimbursed us for that. Also, somebody made a donation for a bench and paid for that. So that's what that is comprised of. Community Development, as you know, we get a block grant from Fairfax County for Corey Law's position, and that's to appropriate those funds. And then finally, the big chunk is, we're going, we're asking for $500,000 of the CARES Act money. That is not the total amount that we received. I anticipate that we're going to have a conversation, discussion item about that in July so we can get into details. But for right now, we've been using existing appropriations to buy the things like PPE, extra sanitization, hand sanitizer, masks, things like that. This would appropriate some of that money to then cover those costs. And so you can see on the revenue side, we're increasing state and federal grant revenues, not otherwise classified as just your miscellaneous item, which is where that donation went and the punch list items went. E-summons, it's actually restricted. We get e-summons funds every year. They're to be used only for police items related to electronic ticketing. We don't spend every dollar of it every year, so we hold it over. And so that's where that is coming from. On the capital project side, the expenditures, that $31,609, that's the, that's the sign. And that, that is funded by the insurance proceeds. And then on the golf fund side, the $1,300 is an insurance recovery. Somebody had attempted to break into one of the storage areas, and we were able to recover the cost for that damage. Next slide, please. So really, I just went through all of that with the numbers. This is just the verbiage. If you want to read it at your leisure, next slide. And again, with the capital projects, and again, with the golf fund, it's just, this is all insurance recoveries. Next slide. I actually think that's it. It's not a 15-pager this time. I am happy to take any questions that anyone may have.
Okay, thank you, Jenny. What questions do you have for, for Jenny? None? All right. Well, thank you. We like it when it's other people's money.
Yes.
Especially right now. Thank you. So no questions? Anybody? Just making sure? All right. Thank you, Jenny. And your puppy was well behaved. Mine just barked, but it sounded like a squeak toy, so you probably didn't hear it. Thank you. So moving right along, the next item is resolution to consider adoption of the town manager's recommended 2022 through 26 portion of the capital improvement program. And again, I'll ask Amanda if we received any comments so far on this item.
Madam Mayor, we did not receive comments on this item.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to recognize Dana Hyberg, who is one of our senior planners or B senior planner for the staff report. Dana does not have video, so we will just be hearing from Dana and seeing his slides. So Dana, whenever you are ready.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I trust you can hear me. This is Senior Planner Dana Hyberg.
Yes, sir. I hear you just fine.
All right. This year is a little unusual, but once again, This year is a little unusual, but once again, we do have our capital improvement program, and it's gone through the process that we typically use. Next slide, please. The purpose of the CIP, it's always important to emphasize it's a planning document, and that would be the case in any year, but I guess especially this year. It does consist of a six-year schedule, as you all know. It is reviewed and recommended by the Planning Commission to the town manager as the Virginia Code allows. And then the town manager is now recommending the program to the town council. It reflects and effectuates the town's goals, as is expressed in the council's vision. And of course, the first year of the CIP was adopted with your operating budget. And, and so we're really, what we're considering tonight and next week is, of course, beyond the budget year, the fact, the CIP, the out-years, as we sometimes say, it's a proposed plan to fund projects from concept through design and construction. Next slide, please. So obviously, this proposed CIP was developed prior to the COVID-19 pandemic situation. The new reality is really an unprecedented physical situation. Achievement of these projects that have been laid out in the CIP is really uncertain, and it's going to be that way for the foreseeable future due to the physical uncertainties. What was a calculated plan really has become an aspirational document. Next slide, please. So I'm going to give you an overview of the CIP as it has gone through the process that we go through each year, but with, again, with the caveats that I've mentioned. So, next slide, please. So we have 48 projects proposed, 36 general fund projects, 12 projects within the enterprise funds. And of course, your enterprise funds are, the golf course has an enterprise fund, water and sewer, cemetery, and downtown parking. So those are your enterprise funds. We do have some new projects this year. And I've listed these projects below. I'm not going to mention all of them. We have the Central Eldon Walkability Grant Project funded through, what we call TAP funding, Transportation Alternatives Program through VDOT, really significant grant. And we have other initiatives as listed. Next slide, please. So the really large VDOT projects, the VDOT administered transportation projects, East Delton Street is over $50 million. VDOT revenue sharing is a 50% match. We are pursuing that in order to reduce the current shortfalls that we, we have to, that the town is covering. When you look at the details of the project sheet, and you'll see that there is a significant funding through general obligation bond funding for that project. And the same goes for Herndon Parkway, Spring Street, Fairfax County Parkway. Again, pursuing VDOT revenue sharing is 50% match. We've been very successful in the past with revenue sharing, I would say, as a whole. But in this current funding environment, we really cannot be, we cannot really prognosticate, I don't think, about whether or not we're going to be successful or to what extent we're going to be successful with revenue sharing. Next slide, please. So we laid out these categories, which was a little different approach this year, and I think is valuable and supportive of our various emphases and approaches. So largest category is this multimodal transportation enhancement. Very significant, of course, of projects. Most of these, I think you're familiar with, the large street projects, some smaller projects. We've got several significant bicycle and pedestrian-oriented projects, streetlights, wayfinding signs. So quite a number of projects that are what we call complete streets type of approach for, for street projects. And then other projects that are addressing specific bicycle facilities or wayfinding signs or streetlights or what have you. Next slide, please. Two more important categories, government facilities and infrastructure. Significant activities that are critical to, to the operations of this government and the service that are provided to town citizens. Information technology, townwide security, an important new project. Police exterior garage, a little farther out in this CIP. Police server room, a really critical effort associated with the important preservation, I would say, or important maintenance of the appropriate cool environment for those servers and other routers and high-tech equipment that we need to provide the fully adequate heating ventilation, air conditioning. And also, we're, we're doing some space expansion within that, that space to enhance the, the environment, the air base, the ability to keep it cool and so forth. And then last on, listed on here as government facilities and infrastructures are downtown redevelopment. And then we do have a specific piece that, if you will, that we are taking on as a town, and that's the Art Center Interior, the Comstock Project Partnership, which would provide the Shell facility with the town, then doing the interior build-out. Over in stormwater management, environmental enhancement, we do have the storm drainage improvements, or a variety of our typical efforts that you see each year, and it's funded by the county stormwater tax, as is stream restoration, which is really important to the water quality and our efforts, our various efforts to enhance Chesapeake Bay and to enhance just the general condition of our, our surface waters. Next slide, please. Additional categories, of course, parks and recreation, always an important effort. We have Sports Field and Park Improvements Project that is typical each year. We have a number of improvements with that coming along in FY '22 and '23. We have Brady Park Tennis Court. I believe that's mainly working with the reserve amount, so that's coming up in the shorter term. We have WOD trail lighting, park equipment replacement, the Herndon Community Center Phase 5, the Trailside State Park Expansion, Running Meat Park Nature Center and Town Hall Square. So certainly, some of the efforts are farther out and require the major general obligation bond type of funding. Golf Course Enterprise Fund, we are really looking out farther with that type of project. We will be doing additional study. There's a need to renovate and extend the 40-year-old clubhouse. But at this time, that's not in the near term, but rather, the project is farther out. Next slide, please. Water and Sewer Fund, always critical infrastructure for the town. And so we have, I think, a pretty similar program to what was presented last year with the major investments, some adjustments in total cost, but fairly consistent there. General water maintenance replacement, and several of these projects that you will recall from last year. The biggest project, I would say, being, of course, the sewer conveyance, and then related to that sewer capacity purchase. That capacity purchase is now slated for FY '22. These are revenue bond-supported type of commitments. Downtown Parking Fund, we have the Downtown Parking Capital Contribution, which is a near-term commitment laid out for an additional $2.6 million in FY '22, the total $3.6 million. And then we have the Chestnut Grove Cemetery Master Plan Effort.
Mr. Hyberg, did we lose you?
Yeah, I don't hear Dana on. I'm sure we'll try to get him. Let me just, let me just carry on.
Thank you. Oh, are you?
Are you back?
Testing? Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Okay, thanks.
Okay, I don't know what happened there, I'm sorry. So we have our, our typical sources of funding that support the CIP, and it's, it's a broad mix, including general fund revenues, obviously, a very substantial amount of grant funding. We do have some profit commitments. We will be doing, planning to do general obligation bond financing for some of the major projects. We have a very small amount of reallocated type of funding. We have the Golf Course Fund, of course, which is an independent enterprise fund that supports the golf courts improvement efforts. With water and sewer, we have both operating revenue, and then we have revenue bond funding. So those are not general obligation bond type of bonds, but they are based on the revenues of that fund, so it's a revenue bond. Fairfax County portion of the water and sewer is something that we've, we've had in the last couple of CIPs. We do have some significant support there from the county. And then with Downtown Parking Enterprise Fund, we also have some additional general obligation bond. And so that is the mix of funding, which is really detailed on your sources' attachment and really gets into the year-by-year and the dollars from each type of funding that supports the various projects. But that's the, that's the full. Next slide, please.
Dana, if you're talking, I don't think we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
There you are.
I don't know what the intermittent thing is, I'm very sorry.
No, it's no problem. We've all had some kind of issue through this adventure, so no problem.
Okay. And we're getting close to the conclusion here. So the, the CIP as proposed, I mean, there is alignment with the comprehensive plan and other policies for the town, as you would expect. And, and major projects that are included in the comprehensive plan are items such as the East Delton Street and Spring Street improvements, Downtown Parking and Art Center, Running Meat Nature Center, Community Center Phase 5, Metro Rail Station Transit Oriented Core, where we have improvement projects, both the bus bays, as we call them, which is the vehicle and pedestrian access along Herndon Parkway, as well as that Metro Rail Promenade project. Other major infrastructure CIP projects are necessary to support the redevelopment that is laid out in the comprehensive plan, so they go hand-in-hand. And I also wanted to mention that we do have several projects that address the 18 action items from the town council's pedestrian plan. And so 12 additional items, such as the high-visibility crosswalks and pedestrian-accessible signals and things of that nature that were in the pedestrian plan, they're, they're kind of in the maintenance category. So really, you don't rise to the level of this type of CIP effort. Next slide, please. Okay, the future situation. Next slide, please. We really have to look at the funding amounts and sources within the document as no longer being assured. Despite, you know, all the work that's gone into this, the realities are just upon us. And funding will be greatly reduced overall. We know that enterprise fund monetary resources are less exposed. Although enterprise fund monetary resources are less exposed, they, they may face downward pressure and uncertainty as well. So that's, that's. Next slide, please. So the path forward, we're going to reassess based on future revenue outlook and kind of, I think, a continual assessment of, of the revenue picture and the recovery from this pandemic. Grant-funded projects are going to be a priority, of course. I mean, we want to ensure the greatest possible benefit from grant funding. And, and we have a situation where these funds generally have already been allocated, in some cases, received by the town, so forth. We want to provide several needed transportation projects so that we can keep moving those forward. They're complex, multi-year projects often, and we certainly want to keep moving forward. We want to prepare for the arrival of Metro Rail and, and the future revenue generating development that should come with redevelopment in that area. And so we, we want to be sure and set that infrastructure stage for that future tax base. So staff will return to council with periodic updates and recommendations. I know that's a, a key point. Next slide, please. The staff recommendation. At this time, we'll, we'll recommend that you approve the resolution dated June 9, 2020, at your public hearing next week. Of course, it's the typical resolution describing the standard CIP process. It does provide, or it does reference, I would say. It references the Planning Commission's pre-COVID recommendation. Remember, the Planning Commission recommendation was back, I think it was February 23rd or 24th. So none of this COVID stuff had really come out at that point. So the, and further, the revolution, the resolution, of course, approves and adopts the CIP. And it does, we did add the, the language that is really important at this stage, and it's really just some additional caveat that the funding shown is dependent on future revenue. So that concludes the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Dana. Hold on, I've got to flip so I can see my colleagues instead of the presentations. There we go. What questions do you have for Dana, anybody? What questions do you have for Dana, anybody? No? Not much to ask when everything's dependent on funds we don't have. Anybody? Okay, Dana, thank you so much for being here, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to roundtables, and our comments are limited to, as you know, I don't have to tell you, you've been here all summer, so who would like to go first? Who has comments? Y'all are so chatty tonight. Nobody? Well, okay, well, Mr. Town Manager, do you have further comments for us?
Nothing, Madam Mayor, thank you.
All right, you guys, well, that concludes our agenda this evening, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
This is Sheila Olem, Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn, see, and there's no other business.
All right, so we have a motion, shockingly, by the Vice Mayor and seconded by Mr. DeCall. If there's no discussion on that motion, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll, I almost forgot.
No problem. Vice Mayor Olem.
Vice Mayor Olem, yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Jennifer Baker, yes.
Councilmember Delagula.
Councilmember Delagula, yes.
Councilmember DeCall.
Councilmember DeCall, yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs.
Councilmember Friedrichs, yes.
Well, McKenna is absent, and Mayor Merkel.
Yes, so that motion carries six to zero with one absence, and we stand adjourned at 8:11 PM. Thank you all for being here and for your support of everything that we're doing right now, I really appreciate it.